Hello everyone, this is Jarvis Eschka with What's Happin' in Birmingham. As you all know, I have been very busy this election season interviewing candidates and also blowing up your timelines with with all those advertisements. Well, I'm back again today. I got a special live interview because most of the interviews you all have seen has been recorded. But this particular candidate, I feel like deserves the special live treatment. So, but know what they're, well, I guess to say is, I'm gonna bring on our Jefferson County Commissioner District One, LaShonda Scales. Or we all like to call her Mama Scales. Come on down.
Yes, sir.
How's it going?
Fine.
Good, 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 good. Well, I want to bring on Commissioner Scales today to kind of, you know, talk about the election season. Also want to talk about, you know, her last four years being a commissioner. Now, as you all know, you don't have any, you have any opposition this cycle.
Right, but there's still gotta vote.
Still gotta vote. And we know this too, you all got real short memories here in Jefferson County. So we wanna, I wanna make sure I get something on the record. Just get her to, you know, in real time to kind of reflect on her last four years as a commissioner, which it has been a very interesting time, not only, you know, in our county, but also in our world. We have pandemic and as I do the taping today, or say live today, gas is like $4 and something. So let's just start back, you know, back in 2019 when you got in office commissioner. What was your first thoughts when you first entered this position?
Well, let me say first of all, before we get started, how much I really appreciate the citizens of Jefferson County and specifically Jefferson County Commission District One for giving me this opportunity to serve them. I came in, I was sworn in in November 2018. And obviously I was a Birmingham City Council member at that point. And one of the first things that I realized when I got to the county was how different the county government operates as opposed to the city government and how it operated. One of the first things that I'll be honest with you that you can appreciate is that I tackled the issue of minority business ownership.
Okay.
And the fact that the county was doing less than 5% business with African-American and women-owned businesses. Okay, and then we went on from there to I began to broadcast the meetings. We never had for Jefferson County, and I'm sure if you think back on it, you said, wait a minute. No, I probably really haven't seen them on social media. Where they didn't believe in, and when I say they, the previous commission didn't believe in having the meetings broadcasted because they thought that that would bring citizens too much into the room.
Now, I know, I'm a little bit, you know, in Alabama government, we have this little law called Sunshine.
Yeah.
Sunshine law, well, you gotta bring some, you know, now we in the internet age where, you know, it's, you know, public meetings can be public as long as it broadcasts live on the internet.
Right, well, but see, here's the deal. When I was a council member, I got a, what we call ordinances at the city. Got a resolution, same difference on some level, for the city of Birmingham, that's how people were able to see the city council meetings in real time. See, when you are watching the news, then the news is only giving a snippet or a soundbite of what you say. So, you know, that doesn't necessarily put everything that that person says in its rightful context, okay? But then in addition to that, when I got to the county and realized, oh, this is why the county is so quiet. This is the reason why when people leave and they, they, you know, buckle onto the county, it appears as though it is very quiet. And I'll be very candid with you and tell you that I didn't want that. I wanted people to be able to see, I believe in transparent government. And so excuse the phone ringing, so I apologize, but I believe in transparent government. And I started broadcasting the meetings. So actually where you see Jefferson County online right now, that started in January of 2019. I was only on the commission two months at that point.
Oh, wow.
And y'all bear with me because I am gonna turn the ring off because I'm sure you have questions, so forgive me.
Okay, I'm gonna go back, we said minority business participation.
Yes, sir.
What was the criteria they was determining minority-owned business?
Well, see, what happened was after, at that time, Commission President Larry Langford was the commissioner, there was a law, and that's why it's important for everybody to understand how your government should be working for you by knowing the laws that govern it. And, and so to keep any commissioner from basically controlling the administrative part of the county, there was a bill that was passed in 2009 called the County Manager Act. So therefore, we don't control the administrative side. However, the county manager does report to the county commission. And the county manager controls the administration or the administrative side of the county. So I worked from the sphere of, okay, well, since you control it and then you have to answer to us, then I'm gonna hold you accountable. Well, a part of that accountability also started with making sure minority-owned businesses, just like yours, have a voice. Believe it or not, we have the first African-American-owned business that now cleans the county courthouse.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, Falls Damatorium cleans the county courthouse. Never been done before. There are some other business opportunities that are now beginning to open. We got a bond refinancing of bonds that we're working on right now. One of the things that I'm talking about is local African-American women-owned businesses being a part of that. But how can you address it if you don't change the policies? So that's really what the commission is commissioned to do. Yeah, we set, you know, the policies for the county. Obviously, whatever that happens at the county, we're responsible for it through the county manager. But you have to know what is it that we were elected to do? And I can just tell you that that was one of the key things that I picked up because I'm a business owner myself. And I know if we don't have someone talking up, speaking up for us, well, then who else can we depend on?
Well, it's about dollars and cents. Like, how big is the budget when you first came in to the budget now that you all got?
Well, I will tell you, the budget has always been over $800 million at the county.
Okay.
Okay, different than it was for me at the city. Because when I left the city, the city was probably like maybe $425 million, something like that. So now you're talking about almost double that budget when I get over here to the county at $800 million plus. So right now, I think we're probably at about close to $900 million. And, and a lot of that came through federal assistance. Some of that came through gasoline increase, like what you're talking about right now. The rebuild Alabama, that came as a part of additional dollars coming off the pump, which we didn't control, but the county did get its portion of it. So it's that budget, and if you ever want to know where a government's priorities are, I gotta do is check what are money going? If it's not going to a particular community, if it's not going to businesses and so forth that particularly look like you and I, well, if you don't see any money really flowing from it, then that means that it's really not a priority.
Well, what would you like to see as far as, you know, I know you're gonna say minority-owned businesses. Is it like as far as revising the bid procedures for it or the guidelines?
Well, it's a little bit of all of it. What I'm saying is that we've gotta work with the Alabama State Legislature. The Alabama, first of all, doesn't allow for home rule.
Okay.
Which means that it doesn't matter what I want, what the commission wants, or give them city. If the, if, if the Alabama State Legislature doesn't pass a bill that mandates requiring governments, like they do in some other places, like in Washington DC, like they do over in Atlanta, to say, you're going to have to do on government projects that you oversee, you're going to have to do a certain amount of business with those individuals, right? And I, one of the things that I talked about, a part of the policy changes, well, if you're saying that a study is needed, then let's do it. Let's get to this study so that we can then do something about the policy. I want to also share this with you that that's one of the reasons why I started broadcasting the meetings. You all are looking at the She Works page right now. Also, Mr. Eschka has his What's Happin' in Birmingham. And I have to be honest with you, it's hard for you to be able to see what is getting done if you don't have the ability to look at it. So if you can't come to the meetings, it's my job, I believe, out of transparency to you, to make sure that it is available jobs. Because I think that, in fact, I know I owe you that. You trusted me, you shaded in my name, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. It is incumbent upon me to make sure that you know exactly what I'm doing on your behalf. So if you would just excuse me briefly, I'm gonna turn off this ring. And I know you're saying like, gosh, she's live and she's doing that. I don't mean to, but I don't want this to be interrupted because you mean that much to me. And I really appreciate Mr. Eschka for having me, so you all just bear with me briefly.
Kind of like within like live TV.
Okay, so I apologize. Some people, y'all might be calling me sometimes when they see us online, but yeah, yes, sir.
So I guess I'm gonna switch over for a bit because the biggest thing too, you know, we in Jefferson County, let's all think about infrastructure.
Yeah.
You know, when you got in office, I know one of your biggest things is, you know, always improving the roads here in the county. Because we have some of the most traveled roads in the state.
That's right.
So what were some of the things you worked on when it came to that?
Well, I will tell you this, one of the, when I was campaigning, I have a, as my dad would call it, elephant memory. There were cities that I began to partner with. And one of the first cities I began to partner with is the city of Fairfield. Fairfield, to me, was a city that had previous economic opportunities there, and they became challenging. And I know that a part of what investors are looking for is they're looking for, hey, access, highway accessibility, making sure the density and the population is there and that money is there, right? So I said, well, wait a minute, if we talking about commerce, commerce gotta come on these roads. So one of the first thing that I did was I partnered with the mayor and the city council. And I asked them, let's partner together between the county and the city to adopt your main roads so that we can get these roads paved. And one of the roads that were paved was when you get off on Valley Road, going from Birmingham to Fairfield, that stretch of the road, you come up Aaron, Aaronoff Drive, which is in front of Western Hills Mall, that long stretch of the road. And then we did one other road over there as well. The project was more than $4.6 million. And I wanted, and I came out the gate in 19, making sure that that happened. Because to me, that needed to happen in order for that city to start looking at some economic growth. The other thing that we did was we went over and adopted, not adopted, in unincorporated areas of Forestdale, paved 18 roads. And what I did was I made sure, talking about that budget, I made sure that those roads that had been approved, keep in mind, I don't control the administrative part, they gotta go out there and look at the roads and this, that, and the other. But what I did do was I fought for it in the budget. So when it come down to budget season, you all have to understand, this is the time when your representative has to step up the plate and say, no, this is what's important to my folks in my district, right? And so I will say that altogether, I've probably gotten about $11 million or more worth of roads being paved in my district. Because my district still has a way to go, but we gotta start from somewhere. So if you tell me I got over $800 million budget, the majority of that budget is salaries, so I want you all to know that, okay? And then for those capital projects, meaning infrastructure you were talking about, I'm fighting for every dollar I can to go over into this area. But also, we began to look like Adamsville. You know, we've had Minor Parkway. And if you all familiar with Minor High School, all of that, you notice that long stretch of, I only have 40% of Adamsville, right? But even the mayor will tell you, LaShonda partnered with this city. And we gave authorization to the county, not only to adopt, but to pave and to maintain that road. You go to Dosina. I finished paving all of the roads that were started in Dosina, it finished under my administration.
Oh, wow, looking right at it.
So for me, I know those things that I campaigned on, which was one of them was dealing with public safety, roads, and making sure we have livable wage jobs. No, I never, I never changed from that, even when COVID was rapid. I, I still wanted to make sure those things that I set out to do, that's what we did. And the roads became the first thing that we worked on outside of broadcasting the meetings.
Okay, well, let's talk about COVID. When it first hit, what did you anticipate, especially how county government was gonna function? Because everybody was pretty much locked down, you know, at home and people couldn't come to work.
Right.
So what was going on with you all during that time?
Well, first of all, COVID, and you need to know why they called it COVID-19 because the strand was actually picked up in 19. When the county began to realize that we were gonna have to do some things to close. Well, one of the things that I advocated for was to make sure that we could still function where citizens in Jefferson County, if you needed a tag, if you need to come down to pay your taxes or whatever the case may be, we still had to make services available for people to do business with Jefferson County. And so one of the things I did on behalf of the county, but through my district, I made an app. So you can go on your Apple device, but particularly your Android device at this point, and you can go to She Works, Jefferson County. You can download the app so I could stay connected, right? And then when people had problems in the district, you had easy access to the county. And one of the things that I can say I'm very proud of as relates to the county's involvement with COVID, we fought for those dollars, that every dollar that came to the county, that we got it in and was trying our best to push it out the door as much as possible. Because truth of the matter is, COVID was rare to us, but it had already been in another country.
Yeah.
Right? And so working with the Jefferson County Health Department, the county ended up getting money, obviously from the federal government, and to help citizens. So that's how we were able to get food. I know for about a year and a half strong, I had 19 sites just in my own district that I established with all of the cities and in unincorporated Jefferson County to make sure that food was provided.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to make sure beyond the food, at that time, it wasn't even popular, for people of color. That mattered whether you African-American, Hispanic, or whatever. It was hard, Jarvis, for that demographic to even be tested, if you remember. When COVID first started, we were struggling to get tests because they said, hey, we didn't have enough test kits, all of that. But there were test kits being done in other places. And I'm saying, hey, what's good for the goose is good for the gallon.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So then I was able to work with the commission where one of the commissioners, Joe Knight, who we both share parts of Commission One. We went up to Cathedral of the Cross, they were going to, the federal government came to Hoover, but didn't come to Birmingham. And then I said, well, wait a minute, if you look at zip code 35215, that demographic has the most COVID positives. So why aren't you doing, why are you going to Trossville? Why you not coming here? That's called advocacy, folks. And so what I did, Jarvis, I said, no, here's what we gonna do. You got to go where the numbers are. So we partnered, it's the late Bishop Philip Wright, I love him, I love that man to this day. Very committed to helping with the community, and so we partnered. And we had not only a COVID testing site, this was what they call a regional testing site.
I remember that, yeah.
Where you could come from across Jefferson County, and you were coming over to zip code 35215. If you wanted to go to Hoover, okay. But if you were over near 35215, that advocacy and that partnership paid off for us, right? And so we went from that to we were able to garner a regional vaccination site. If you got the vaccination, I would, you know, have encouraged you to, but if you didn't, I understand. But we wanted to make sure it was available. And then lastly, that rental, mortgage, and utility assistance. The county invested more than $11 million into making sure, and I think right now we probably have $15 million between the Urban League and JCCO, where we provided over $15 million just in COVID relief, that if you were not working, you could prove about your income had been interrupted as a result of COVID. We were making sure that from the county end, that you had at least some assistance so you can get your needs met. And I think that that's what true representation is all about.
So, you know, things like a couple of years ago, people used to hear about the county, you know, whether it was the sewer issue or whether they was the money issue. So today, as far as, you said, in the bank account, around about $800, $900, is the county financially on good footing?
Oh, yeah. That one thing about the county that I have really been able to say since I've been there, county is not broke. The county, the county has money is based on how the county spends their money.
Okay.
County, county is a lot more intentional and shrewd about whatever the investment is, how much of the rate of return are we going to receive? And they're very adamant about that, you know what I mean? It doesn't matter how much money you have, it's how you spend it.
Okay. Well, and two, I guess now I wanna talk about as far as like economic, gosh, what's that word? It's like economic development, economic development. What are some things you worked on to try to bring industries to Jefferson County, like headquarters here and stuff?
Well, you know, I'm vice chair of the Economic Development Committee. I will tell you that for Commission District One, you know, in the past, you got your Camtechs and that, you know, those kind of projects, which I'd like to see a lot more industry coming to Commission District One. But I can tell you overall, and then I'll go back to District One, the county, like Smuckers, you got with UAB Genomics Project, obviously, you know, with the stadium project, Protective USFL, we've been able to partner with as well.
You raised some money to the World Games too, right?
Well, I was about to say, as a matter of fact, we probably at this point have done maybe a little bit more than $3 million towards supporting, you know, different economic development pushers, obviously, including the World Games. For District One, when I first became a commissioner, US Field reopened a portion of his plant. And so obviously, they needed some support. There are some other projects that I know will be underway. But I will be honest with you, having the quality of life such as, you know, retail and some other things, while it is incumbent upon the city government in order to stimulate that, and then the county comes along and partner, because we are bound by state law. We can't just go into the city and say, hey, you know, we wanna see Starbucks and get it for us. No, you can't do it. The city has to allow the county government to partner with them for such projects. I will tell you that while we've had a lot of projects going on between County Commissions District One and Two, I'd like to see a lot more day-to-day quality of life type of establishments. When you're speaking of your restaurants, when you're speaking of family outings, you know, places you can go. Believe it or not, the city of Trossville just opened recently, don't know if you've seen it, they have their own entertainment district. And I just said, wow. So if you go down Gaston Highway, you will notice that there's a Rodney Scott's restaurant getting ready. That, you know, they got one in Hoover, one on the south side of Birmingham. Okay, so now they're getting ready to go down Highway 11 in Trossville. In addition to the fact, you have a Half Shell Oyster House that's in Trossville, and this entertainment district, big wide screen and all that. And I say all that to say this, I'm looking for that in Commission District One. I don't wanna hear about what the people, the color of the people who live in District One. I want District One to have the very best that every community deserves. And that's where that advocacy come from. And I'm not gonna be shy in my ask to say that whatever we need to do in terms of partnership with these cities in those unincorporated areas, we need to get to work, we need to do it. No excuses, whatever you do in McCalla, whatever you do in Hoover, whatever you do in these other areas, I wanna make sure if Trossville have an entertainment district, I know that Birmingham has one, but I'd also like to see entertainment districts in Fairfield, entertainment district in Adamsville, Midfield. You know, these areas, they matter, Forestdale, they matter.
So Tuesday, two days from now, what do you want to tell people? Because, you know, Jefferson County, I guess it's like 500,000 registered voters here.
Over 600.
Over 600, but only like 20, 30% come out?
Yeah.
What you would like to tell the viewers, the ones that's like a little undecided about, you know, going to the polls? And I'm gonna say something too, because you all know I've been interviewing a lot of folks. So I thought about this today, but I'm gonna speak first before I get on my potato box. Oh, you want me to go?
No, I mean, it's up to you.
Oh, okay, well, I will say, I will say this, while this is on my mind. I feel like all the positions are very important that's running. But some of the most important positions is these judges' positions, everybody. Please research all these candidates that's running for judge. I've had almost about 100%, I'm probably about 95%. Now, don't quote me now, if you see me do another interview tomorrow after I've seen this, because I've tried my best to interview as many judges as possible because at some point in your life, somebody you know, they're gonna come before a judge. And I have interviewed all these judges, and one thing I want you to think about is, would you want to go before them if they was a judge?
There you go.
So when you watch, go back and watch all my interviews I did with all the candidates. Put, answer that question in your mind, would you wanna go before that judge? If you don't wanna go before that judge, then you need to go vote. And then tell your friends to vote for that judge that you wanna go before because, I'm telling you, that is one of the most important positions on the ballot, and they only change every six years.
Yeah.
And then most of the time, most of these judges are the last voice. So there's no jury trial, they're the final say. So think about that. So go ahead, I'm getting on my tail.
Well, that's all right, stay on it. I'm gonna tell you why you need to go vote. I've realized that saying that, you know, especially for black folk, that, you know, people have died, blood, sweat, tears, all of that, obviously, that's not resonating. So let me tell you why you need to go vote. Your vote is your voice. You wonder why your neighborhood look a certain way? You think you don't like the fact the roads are not paved? You're not getting the economic type of benefits of living there? Your school system is not up to par and that kind of thing? It's because when you think about it, how much or how many of the people in your community actually get out to vote? So you gotta understand, people like myself, meaning elected officials, they're going by numbers. Numbers is what causes you to win. If you don't give 50% plus one vote, that's why even though I didn't have opposition, I said, no. But Jarvis, I owe it to any voter in Jefferson County to explain the process of why it's so important that you vote. Don't ever let anybody take your voice. You always make people to understand, I got you in, I can get you out. I got you in, I can get you out. When people gotta work by that premise, think about it on your regular job. Or when you were working, if you're retired and you're looking at me. The people who didn't work, if you worked for a company that really had to perform, you knew like, man, them folk, they gonna get fined. You understand?
Yeah.
And so if you didn't do what you needed to do, you already knew you didn't have a job. Why do you all let politicians get off? Why do you let them get off? So that's why I'm saying you need to go vote because it's up to you. You, like he said about these judges, you have the final say on May 24th, this Tuesday. Today is Sunday, Monday, and then you go vote, Tuesday, right? You need to know where to go vote ahead of time. Don't waste, oh, man, I was gonna vote, but you know, they sent me to the wrong poll. No, come on now, we better than that.
There's AlabamaVotes.gov too, and that's the site you go.
They can go to AlabamaVotes.gov, or you can go old school and call. First thing tomorrow, if you look on the description on here, that's one of the things that I've posted. Your vote is your vote, right? And let me also share this with you as well, and I told Jarvis, we need to definitely talk about this. I am on the Democratic ballot, but you might see a Republican candidate for governor or for state senate, or whatever the case may be. But here's what you gotta understand, for the primary, meaning for this Tuesday, if you pull If you pull a Republican ballot, you can only vote in the Republican election side of Tuesday. That means that when you say, hey, I want to go and vote for Katie Britt, okay, get tricked if you want to. But you got some Democrats, myself, Danny Carr, whoever you want to go vote for, right? And you fool around there and say, well, wait a hold up. But, but why I don't see LaShonda Scales? Well, why I don't see? First of all, you gotta be in Commission One to see your commissioner's name, but you gotta pull that Democratic ballot in order to see it, right? So you got to know that. If you are Republican and you desire to vote for a Republican, you have got to pull the Republican ballot for the candidates on the Republican ticket that you're interested in. If, and that includes the runoff also, if you are a Democrat, you need to repull the Democratic ballot. I pray you do, and that I'm on it, so you can vote for me. So that you can be able to participate in that. Even though I don't have opposition, I still have to have votes, right? And for these other individuals who are running these judges, you got the district attorney's office, you got the governor who's building three mega prisons. Okay, uh, you got all of these different dynamics going on, but guess what? You got to know the rules of engagement. You pull a Republican ballot, you can only vote Republican in the primary. Not in the November election, right? That's general. But for the, uh, primary, you got to, ma'am and sirs, make sure that's the case. So how do you verify that, LaShonda Scales, at that same telephone number? Two oh five, three, two, five, 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 zero. If you are internet savvy, go to Alabamavotes.gov. You can go to my info. You click on there, and then it's gonna allow you to find out what your precinct is and all of that. But we don't have, we, we don't want there to be no guessing game in terms of where to go. Polls are open seven AM to seven PM. Seven AM, set your cell phone on reminder, seven AM to seven PM. And let me also say this too, Jarvis. People were so upset about the previous president. I know you can do it, because when early voting was available, you wrapped around the courthouse. Every election counts. And speaking of, of, of what you're saying, uh, I'm gonna just share with you all, the viewers and you too, uh, Jarvis. There was a particular judge that I have a lot of respect for. He, he, and I'll tell you who he is, cause I hope you all, you know, give him a shout out too, Michael Street. Yeah, he, he's over the criminal division, right? And my heart bleeds, cause y'all just don't know, when I see these young folk getting killed, and then next thing you know, you see that picture posted up. Well, see, these cases are being tried either in Jefferson, which is downtown Birmingham. Or in Bestwick, right? In the Bestwick cutoff. And so I went to him particularly about an inmate. And I'll be honest with you, that's the kind of judge you want, is one who really cares about you beyond the job. This person had a kidney disease, um, and they were on, um, uh, kidney machine, right? And I went to, to Judge Street, and I said, Judge, I said, listen, you know, you over the criminal course. And I said, you know, I need your help, if you don't mind, uh, because this inmate is trying to, after I showed him the pictures, person arm had been discolored, cause they used some kind of glue for the shunt, they put in the inmate's arm and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, and he went out of his way to help. I'm gonna tell you something, folks. Don't ever believe in taxation with no representation, cause that's what you're doing. If you are clocking in on a job, you are paying my salary, the salary of those who work for the city, the salary of those who work in the state house, and the salary of those who work for the federal government. Why in the world would you not hire and fire individuals who are not working for you? How do I do that, LaShonda Scales? That means that I'm going to vote. I can vote for you, or I can vote against you. Now, I know people saying like, my goodness, LaShonda, it's because of your personality. But I'm gonna be honest with you. You know why I'm so honest with you? Because in my lifetime, I want to see some real change, uh, Jarvis. I don't want us to be in a situation where we, we act a certain way in order for us to get elected. Then when we get elected, you don't hear from us. I don't even deal with people like that in my personal life. So I'm really offended when you say you're gonna be my voice at the county, at, you know, state house, federal house, city house, whatever. And man, I don't even talk to you. How do you do that? So when those people choose not to talk to you in order to represent you, then you guys say, okay, like when this, this live finishes, I would encourage you all to go back on my She Works page. LaShonda Scales, she works, and I want you to go back and look at my work. See, while COVID was running rapid, you know what my staff and I were doing? Creating an app, so I can have better connection to you. Yeah, ma- making sure that, hey, if you want to know where a food site is, I wasn't waiting on the county. Now, we gonna create an app. I was gifted to have, you know, staff that can be able to do coding and some other thing. Got an app, broadcasting it, showing up, I'm showing up with mask on and out there in the cold and all that. But I realized during COVID, what lack of representation looks like, uh, Jarvis. And when you see these seniors, and a lot of them don't really have family who can help them, it really bothered me. Then when I would have a senior, one lady, she, she got nervous, cause it was so many people that was coming to get food. And when she was in the line, and, uh, people like, come on, come on, come on, come on. And, and she, she panicked at the wheel, and I had to literally say, calm her down, say, let me who you call for you, just hold on just a minute. Cause here's what COVID did. It brought out just how weak we really are. And this system that's supposed to be working for people, just how much, Jarvis, it hasn't been. So I'm on my potato box too, y'all, so forgive me.
On my last potato box, and I'm not gonna step into it, because she is technically a candidate, is. And as we, as you watching this video, you looking at two people of color. You all, please stop looking at these paper ballots. Please research these folks. You don't go off of, you gonna get a thousand ballots on Tuesday from this place, and I'm not taking this money away from any of these organizations.
And they are getting paid.
Yeah, and they say they're making these recommendations. But I, like I told you, research, pull the veil. See who is behind some of this stuff, cause you have things called political action committees, which people donate to political action committees to hide behind that.
That's right.
And then when, like I said, they giving you these pieces of paper, and you looking, and you like, okay, well, don't, no. Please research, even go on Secretary's, Secretary's State site to see, you know, who's giving these people these candidates money. Look at that too, cause a lot of times a D sometimes can be a R. So just keep that in mind.
Oh, yeah. A lot of Rs been D's.
Keep that in mind. I know we can talk all day, but, uh, thank you.
No, you know, I, I always, I, I enjoy you. And, uh, Jarvis, you have been such a pillar in this community. Trying to do as much as you possibly can to move the needle to make us think, to really, for us to go beyond just images. I'm concerned that, you know, we have, at this point, I was at Ramsey High School the other day. I asked the children, I said, now, we talking about Ramsey, the Magnus School, right? And, uh, asked them, you know there's an election? Now, you talking about twelfth grade. You know there's an election next week? Only about maybe three or four raised their hand. So then that tells me, are your family going to vote?
Yeah, make your family phone.
Hey, hey, they, they don't know. But see, when I was in high school, you were registered to vote. As soon as you turn eighteen? So that you understood, that's your civic duty. That's your duty as an American city. I mean, an American, uh, 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 for you to get out to vote as an American, okay? You got people in the military that have died, lost limbs, all kind of things for you to enjoy this right to participate in what happens, right? So it's a slap in the face to them when we don't go vote. And, you know, I want to leave you all with this today. I try my best to get to as many, uh, of the voting locations as I possibly can. I want you to know from me to you, that you are the change. You and I, I always say that in my videos, when you and I work together, we will be the change we got to see. Our communities are, they're in self-destruction mode right now. And you see a lot of, of the sheriff's deputies out on the roads like never before. That's why every time something that comes up involving public safety, I campaigned on it. But that's one of the reasons why I'm probably one, if not the biggest advocate about public safety being in the local community. Because we're on our eighth Birmingham City School student to be killed due to gun violence. In the county right now, I think that Jarvis, we're probably like, uh, close to seventy homicides, right? And out of that, the majority is the city where I live in, so I can't help but to be concerned. But I recognize that Jarvis, if it's, if law enforcement works in one part of the county, meaning the Vestavias, the Clay Chalkfalls, the Trustfalls and all of that, it can work in the community where I live. And so I'm just gonna tell you, folks, we gotta pray. Jarvis, you said it just right. You all don't know a lot of these different ballots that you receive. You gotta pay for a table, pay for a seat, pay for this.
A hundred dollars a minute.
And, 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 you know, God knows, I say to myself, this, this is not what's gonna change the needle, folks. And so when you get there, and you haven't done your own homework, don't never let anyone discount your, your intelligence. You understand? Get on, you, you, as much as we use these phones, Jarvis, there's no way in the world you can't use Google to find out what you need to know, what needs to happen in your community, right?
Yeah, and, and once you get there at the pole, they, they got the seven o'clock. So you got them seven in the morning, seven. Nobody's kicking you out, so when you go in that little booth, if it takes you five minutes to fill that thing out, don't feel pressured. If you gotta sit there and think, you know, you bubbling like, uh.
You don't rush yourself in a restaurant. You sit there and eat, eat and talk and do whatever you want. Hey, and, and I'm gonna tell you something. The, so you all will know, uh, due to, to some things that happened, you know, uh, I'll just say, they're gonna be very particular in terms of the elections this time, right? So now, you're not gonna just be connected to the internet. They're kind of going old school on you, should have been done it. But due to some things that happened recently, that's the reason why now you notice how, uh, these commercials are saying about voter fraud. And the fact that they're not gonna allow voter fraud to, to happen, right? Well, I'm gonna just be very candid and tell you. Jarvis, we have got to look at elections a lot more seriously, and how, uh, who conducts it. Why it's to turn out what it is, you understand? It worked for us in the presidential election, right? And with some of these commercials that I'm seeing, I think it's shameful. When we have gun violence, yet we are, we are voting and thinking about voting for candidates who believe that you, it's okay for you not to be checked for a permit for a gun, and yet we just experienced all of this gun violence that's happening in Jefferson County in the local community. We all have, uh, a part to play. I understand that. But for those of us like myself, that we set the policies, uh, and study, what is the job of who you're voting for? I just told you as a county commissioner, well, what's your job, Commissioner Scales? Listen, we set the policy for the county. County manager carries out the policies that we pass. We also, uh, uh, govern what happens with the taxes, uh, the taxes uh, that, uh, that we take in. We also have an oversight in terms of the budget, in terms of spending, how the money goes and where it goes, right? That's, that's the job of the commissioner. Now, if I'm voting for a state representative, what's their job? Pretty much the same. They're over the policy piece of it. You know, meaning they making the rules. Their, their oversight is to pass a balanced budget with you included, right? The same thing a part of the senate, what does a senator do? They are part of the voting process of that same budget. Approving, approval of the sponsorship of these bills. Uh, so a lot of things that people think that people do, let's get out of thinking, let's get to knowing. What is it that you do? And the good thing is, you can look it, look it up on Google. You can research this information for yourself, these judges. You need to know, what is the difference between a civil judge, circuit judge, criminal judge, and especially in our community. You better know what these criminal judges stand for, because there's nothing like your loved one stole a piece of chewing gum for whatever reason, didn't pay a ticket once they, uh, uh, you know, processed your name. Next thing you know, they got a case, and they spending twenty years in prison for a judge that just wanted to prove a point. That's what you don't want. And does that happen? Yeah? I don't care what they say, you watch what they do. And you ask yourself, how long has this person, before they start wanting? How long you been working in my community? Do you wanna vote for a judge or a district attorney? That's why I love Danny Carr.
Yeah, that is, that is one.
I mean, the, the thing is, how, how can you have empathy for my community who have been nothing more than a victim to a system that was never designed for them to succeed in? And now, you gonna tell me you care, cause you running? Everybody cares about you when they running. Look for the consistency.
Well, look for the ability to perform as a lawyer too. And even if you got to research him at that Birmingham bar too.
That's right.
Or whatever the state bar.
Yeah.
That's, I'm telling y'all.
So when he talks about these judges, and I'll say this too, if you don't mind, uh, Jarvis, even though this, this your program. I love Jarvis. Jarvis and I have been together a long time. Uh, let me tell you something. And, and, and for those of you all who can identify, I'm gonna share something with you. And it's more on a personal note. Um, had someone to adopt a child, right? Had the child from infancy, up to the child's about eleven years old. Child gets to be eleven years old, now the mother wants to step into the child's life. I'll never forget begging this particular judge, don't get his child back, whatever you do. Because the, the parent of this child, you talking about giving the child back too? Is, is not being honest. They still, they still doing drugs, right? They gave this child back anyway, we talking about the courts now. Gave this child back to their parent. And the foster mom was heartbroken, because you've done the heavy lifting. I mean, from months to eleven years old, and now I just gotta give you back. And whatever the parent says, you just gotta get with the program, right? Gave the child back less than a year, the child was failing in school. The child was being abused, child went through some things. And I'll never forget saying to this judge, how could you have allowed this broken system? You didn't do your homework. And I'm not gonna lie, when that judge lost, it didn't hurt my feelings whatsoever. Because I knew, you can get out here and say different things, but you gotta check the, the consistency, folks, of these people's record. We talking about judges, cause you've interviewed a lot of judges, but I'm talking about the district attorney too, right? Uh, he doesn't have opposition. But here's the deal, what if I have an insensitive de- district attorney, and your, your loved one gets railroaded because you got a district attorney that said, no, I'm gonna nail him to the cross. Now, you got a district attorney right now that represents Jefferson County doing second chance job faith. See, I participated in that with this district attorney. This is how you win. But you know what? That person never left the community. So you gotta vote for people who have represented the community and stay in the community. And so if you want to know where to go vote, Alabama spelled out, A L A B A M A. Votes with an S, Alabamavotes.gov. Find out where to go vote. And then go vote, and vote for people that you have researched these folks. And you believe that they will represent your interests, not on what they said on their little cute card that came in the mail or the robo-call or whatever. Get beyond the pictures and the imagery, and let's look at these people's record to make sure, are you representing my interests? Remember, it's in your hands. It's in your hands. You have the ability to hire, you have the ability to fire. You the boss. Start acting like a boss, and recognize there's an evaluation coming. And I pray that I have been the kind of representative that you could be proud to say, that's my leader. Now, I, I make no mistakes about it. When I ran for a different office, that's because I live here, and I recognize that either I can be a part of what needed to change, or things being the same. But the same applies to me as a commissioner. Any mayor that I've ever worked with would tell you, she is on it about, if she give you her word, you can ask the mayors of the folk in my district. You can ask the mayors of the folk in my district, they will tell you that Forestdale. Cuz they in unincorporated Jefferson County, uh, I can tell you right now, we adopted a park, had the county to finally adopt it. Holiday Hills cleaned it up, did what we need to do, right? But I just did another hundred and fifty thousand dollars, cuz you know what, I believe you should have fun in the park where you live at. Why you gotta be trying to go here, there, and everywhere? I don't want you to have to go to Trussville in somebody else's district in order to, you know, enjoy your community. Well, these are the people that you got to vote for, you got, uh, a, a great job ahead of you. And your job is to make sure that you like, click, and share this interview. Always share, you know, Jarvis's information, because it is helpful. Uh, and I'm asking you to like, click, and share on my page right now, and invite people to have conversations. Because I'm tired of us voting without knowledge. It's not enough when these people come with the signs, oh, vote for this one, vote for that one, nah, the truth of the matter is, let me go by your record. Now, I'm running as a Democrat, so you gotta pull that Democratic ballot, if you wanna vote for LaShonda Scales. For Jefferson County Commission District Number One. So if you are in, my areas include all of East Birmingham, all of North Birmingham. Pratt City, Hooper City, forty percent of City of Center Point, okay? Also, we are in forty percent of Adamsville, all of Dosina, Wyland. All of Dolomite, all of Fairfield, all of Midfield, okay, and Forestdale. Those are the areas, you don't know where to go vote, Alabamavotes.gov. Call that number, two oh five, three, two, five, 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 zero, and scroll on up. I've earned the name, She Works, so from the county roads, to making sure we get money in our schools. Investing more than two million dollars into our community for community projects, getting ready right now, as a matter of fact, Jarvis. To do another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over at Jefferson State Community College. So this health program, uh, that just came out, uh, through, a, a portion of it is, is through UAB. They partnering with Jefferson State Community College in my district. And so altogether, we have done four hundred thousand dollars for Jefferson State Community College. Since I've been a commissioner, out of our district funds, does that make sense? And all of the schools that I believe that we can try our best to help. Uh, I still got a few more schools I gotta cover, but I promise you, uh, they don't even have to ask me, I make sure that there's money there. Because I know where your money is, that's where your heart is, where that money is, that's where your priorities are. So Tuesday, this Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, I pray that I will be your candidate of vo- voice. Choice, I, that's cuz I'm used to saying your voice, the reason being is because I do use my voice for you. I'm in a talking job, this is what I do, so Tuesday, it's your choice to allow me to continue. To be your voice.
Well, Commissioner Scale, I want to thank you for coming on today, I hope y'all enjoyed this. I, I don't know what the views, looking at how many people are live viewers, I'm gonna go back in a minute and check it out, but please. Please, please, please go out and vote, please check out what's happening Birmingham dot com for more interviews. Don't forget to subscribe to the YouTube channel, cuz y'all need to bounce and subscribe to, like, if you bounce, I can monetize this thing. Um, and check me out on Apple Podcasts, so thank you all again, have a great day, and go vote, and check out Alabamavotes.gov.
Go vote, yes, when you vote, you got hope.
Yes, I like that, I like, bye, y'all.
Alright.